I declare this meeting open for the transaction of any business which may properly come before it. The city of Moosejaw is located within Trade 4 territory, the original lands of the Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and the homeland of the Métis Nation. The Nahihawak translation to Moosejaw is Moso Tapskin and is the shared landscape for indigenous peoples and settlers from around the world who call Moosejaw home. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes of the past, we're committed to move forward in equal partnerships with indigenous nations with respect and in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. Is Counsel Robinson joining us electronically? To our, we haven't heard, okay. Then we'll proceed with confirming the agenda. I'll need a motion that the agenda for the regular meeting of City Council on Monday, March 25th, 2024 be adopted as presented. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Counsel Looney, Counsel Eby, all in favor? That is carried. For public acknowledgements, I wish to rise under public acknowledgements and advise that the month of April will be proclaimed Autism Acceptance Month in the city of Moosejaw. Invite you to join me in recognizing Autism Acceptance Month by learning more about autism to increase acceptance and support for autistic people. Are there any other public acknowledgements by council this evening? Seeing none, we'll proceed with adopting the minutes from the last meeting. We'll need a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of City Council held on Monday, March 11th be approved and adopted. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counsel Froze, seconded by Counsel Logan. All in favor? That is carried. Is there any member of council that is required to declare a pecuniary interest on any matter on the agenda this evening? I'm seeing none. There are no public hearings this evening, so we'll go into the committee of the whole. So I'll need a motion if we go into the committee of the whole, under the chairmanship of Deputy Mayor Counsel Eby, to deal with original communications, delegations, and petitions. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Counsel Blanc, seconded by Counsel Logan. All in favor? That is carried. Counsel Eby, I will just change the microphone.
Thank you, your worship. We have five items in committee of the whole this evening, or this afternoon, actually, I guess. The first being Communication 38 from the Engineering Services Department, reapplication for exemption to bylaw 5488. City administration?
Thank you, Chair. I'd also like to welcome our manager of design and projects, Travis LeBlanc. Travis, thank you for being here with us tonight. I asked Travis to come as he represents the staff in engineering that do the design of our linear assets, which is the scope of the projects we're talking about here today. This is a brief report to seek out approval for a bylaw exemption, noise bylaw exemption, extending working hours from 5:00 a.m. to midnight. On the second page is the locations that we would intend to provide this to our contractors to. I'll just read them out. Main Street North, southbound lane from Manitoba Street to River Street. Main Street North, northbound lane from Fairford to Manitoba. Main Street North, again, from McDonald to Saskatchewan. Main Street near City Hall. Thatcher Drive from Grace Street to 16th Avenue Northwest. Thatcher Drive, South Side Lane, from the East Service Road to SAS Crop Insurance. And River Street East, from Main to First Avenue Northeast. So the complete list of locations is included in the report in the attached image, attachment B. The locations requested are, due to the fact that they're commercial areas or areas where there's not residences impacted. So we're looking ways to expedite work here and give our contractor opportunities to get work done faster, working around and avoiding residential homes. If there's any questions about the report or the project, I'm happy to answer. I do want to note, since this report was issued, we've confirmed our open house date, which will be this coming Wednesday night at 7:00 p.m. here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harleton. Any questions or comments? Counsel Blanc?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to administration, I see the areas that are highlighted, the noise exemption, the one area that, I agree that, you know, we've got to get that work done, but the one area that I have a little concern with that is not on the list is Cotto and 9th Southwest, because that is an extremely busy intersection, and I'm just wondering if it could be, should have been added to the list, just to get it done so the traffic can get through.
Mr. Harleton?
Thank you for the question. I will note that this report seeks approval for the bylaw exemption for the road renewal and infrastructure programs to allow contractors to perform work between the hours of 5:00 and midnight. And one of the intersections I had wondered about is that exact one, and what I would like to propose is you leave that to administration, and if we can squeeze some extra work out of that intersection, we will, because through a function of 9th Avenue is why we want to get out of there quick. So we'll consider that and include that moving forward if we can get this exemption.
Perfect. Thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you, Counsel Blanc. Counsel Froze?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I really appreciate this report, and I think this will help speed things up for sure, because people can work, the crews can work a lot quicker when it's a lot less traffic. But I do have a question about currently with our own crews, working into the evening, because I've seen a few posts on Facebook of a few residents that have had work done in their neighborhood and were kind of surprised that it was going on into the evening. And I'm just wondering, do we have, like, is there, how do we determine where and when we do that? And do we notify the neighbors that that's going to go on? Or, like, what's our strategy around that part?
Mr. Harleton?
Notification comes from Public Works primarily through impact to lanes or impact to service. So if you're losing access to your home for an extended period of time, i.e. beyond a eight-hour working day window, or if you're losing your sanitary or water service, that's when Public Works will put forward a communication plan ahead of that. I've seen some information around some work that occurred overnight, and I haven't had anything put to me formally about specific locations or that. And for my own part, I was really happy to see that our roadways crew was that aggressive to get out there and do work. It could be that we've caused ourselves to have to look at some processes that we didn't previously. Normally, the work being undertaken by our roadway staff for short duration wouldn't have advanced notices. And then again, if and when information comes to me about specific locations, we can have a look at those too as well.
Well, I'm just wondering, like, if we're, I know the community overall wants, especially if it's potholes, obviously, want to see that those get attended to as quick as possible, but I think it's also prudent maybe to somehow notify citizens that this is going to happen so they don't think it's going to carry on kind of night after night, or how long it's going to take, or those kinds of things. And that would, being proactive, I think would help avoid a few complaints. And that, some people are very sensitive, I mean, obviously, when you hear the backup beeping continually, you know, if you're a person, like, most people my age in bed by early hours, and that. So if there's a way we can communicate that, I don't know how that would work, because I know we have lots of potholes and those types of things to tackle. But I think that would be a good strategy for citizens to kind of know that this is going on with our own crews. But I definitely support this initiative put forward. I think that's really good. It'll help us tackle and get these done a lot sooner in these areas. So I appreciate the initiative here. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Anything further? Counsel Blanc?
Thank you all. I'd be happy to move the recommendation. I would move that City Council approve the Department of Operations Engineering Services' request for an exemption to bylaw number 5488, noise bylaw, for the 2024 road renewal and infrastructure renewal programs to allow contractors to perform work for the hours between 5:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m. midnight.
Thank you, Counsel Blanc. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Next, we have Communication 48 from the Planning and Development Department, re-Housing Accelerator Fund application decision. Director Sanson?
Thank you. This is in follow-up to the application that was made to Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation under the Housing Accelerator Fund last summer. We've been notified that the city was not successful in their application. We had identified 11 initiatives in our housing action plan for about $19 million, and they, we did meet with them on March 13th, but they weren't able to provide any of the reasons for not receiving the funding, other than that it was a very competitive process. They received 544 applications across Canada, and 178 of those were approved. The amount that was allocated was $4 billion, and they received applications for $8 billion. So unfortunately, we were unsuccessful in that grant application.
Thank you for that update. Any comments or questions on that? Counsel Froze?
Thank you, Chair. Well, it's really unfortunate that we didn't get approved, but I can imagine the competition out there right now for housing and that. I'm just wondering, in the application, was it done by categories like sizes of cities? Like, were we competing against cities our own size? Or, because, I mean, if we're competing against Toronto, we're in deep trouble.
We were. We were competing against all the larger centers. Under, I think it was under 20,000 were allocated separately. So we did compete with all the big cities across Canada in our pool.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that there's not separate categories for that, because, I mean, our and his, of course, are very different than that of larger cities, so that's really too bad. And is there, I noticed here that it says that we didn't get really a response on why we didn't meet the criteria. Is there going to be follow-up with them afterwards, or there's no communication as to why?
No, we asked if there was something we could have done differently, if there was something we didn't meet in the application, and they weren't willing to talk about that, and they weren't providing us any feedback for future applications on that.
Again, that's a big disappointment, when we're a smaller city like ours trying to compete with the big ones. Like, how do we know how to improve or redirect, you know, the money that we're asking for? So that's too bad, but, yeah, but, yeah, unfortunate for us. Thank you for the report. Thank you, Chair.
Counsel Blanc?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to administration, will this program be available next year, or is that hard to say?
We asked about that as well, and unfortunately, they weren't able to provide an answer on that. It didn't sound like it, so they couldn't give us an answer, really. I'm not anticipating it, though.
Well, that's unfortunate. We didn't get even a portion of it. Thank you. Thank you for the report.
Counsel Blanc, did you want to?
There's nobody else, so I'll move the recommendation, the Communication CC 2024-0048 regarding the Housing Accelerator Fund application decision to be received and filed.
Thank you. No further speakers in the queue, so I'll call a question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Next, we have Communication 43 from the Planning and Development Department, re-subdivision of the Zero Block River Street West. Ms. Sanson?
Thank you. This is the final step in the purchase of the River Street back to the city of Moosejaw. This is fairly technical, and then we don't see any issues with moving forward, so definitely recommend the approval of that subdivision.
Thank you for that. Questions, comments? Counsel Logan?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions. Just thought I'd move, this is more of a housekeeping item, so I thought I would move the motion if there's no one else lining up in the queue, that move that Plan of Proposed Subdivision Application for a Portion of Parcel A, Plan Number 102065532 be approved, subject to the review process being completed with no negative comments received, and that upon satisfaction of the above condition, the mayor and city clerk be authorized to issue a certificate of approval, all in accordance with the Planning and Development Act of 2007.
Thank you, Counsel Logan. Anyone further? Seeing none, I'll just pass the gavel, just quickly, quickly.
I just think it's important that, when this first came to us, a lot of people were confused about what this was really about, so I think it's important just to reiterate again that this just returns, the street portion of River Street will now become a right-of-way again, and that it'll be two parcels, one on the north and one on the south side of the street. So that's all it is. We're just taking our street back, and which we have commitment to clear snow and street-sweeping and all that stuff. So it's nothing crazy or weird, it's just, it was confusing to people in the beginning, so just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Got the gavel back. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call a question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Next, we have Communication 50 from the City Manager's Office, Re Buffalo Pound Water Treatment Corporation election. City Manager?
Good evening, council. Yes, so as just mentioned, this report is for the election of directors for the Buffalo Pound Water Treatment Corporation. The city of Regina and the city of Moosejaw have voting membership holders of the Buffalo Pound Water Treatment Corporation, and pursuant to the unanimous membership agreement between the two cities, we must exercise our voting rights as a membership to appoint members to the Board of Directors, as has been recommended by the Governance and Nominating Committee. The Articles of Incorporation on the Unanimous Membership Agreement in place relating to Buffalo Pound provide for a Board of Directors that is structured as follows. So it is five to nine voting directors that are nominated by the Governance and Nominating Committee. The Board has recommended to not fill the vacancy of one member, which is Mr. Dave Richards, so whose term expires in 2024. With the appointment of two additional directors back in 2023, the Board will continue to operate within the parameters of the UMA. So one incumbent director, whose three-year term is expiring in April 2024, Mr. Grant Ring, has applied for a reappointment, and the Buffalo Pound Water Treatment Corporation Board supports his reappointment. After completing this appointment and not filling the one vacancy, the resulting board and the term expires are as detailed in your report, with the members except for Mr. Richards for 2024 and on. So as I mentioned, that vacancy will not be filled. So of course, the reappointment rounds the competencies of the Buffalo Pound Water Treatment Corporation Board and ensures that the continuation of geographic representation exists. So we do currently have two directors from Moosejaw. One will be remaining at the end of, once this vote goes in, so we'll have the one member from Moosejaw. And just as a point, as a note, the Board members are limited to nine years' conservative years of service on that board. And that completes my report.
Thank you. City Manager? Mayor Tolly?
Chair, I'll move the recommendation that the City Manager, as the city's proxy, be authorized to exercise the city's voting rights in the Buffalo Pound Water Treatment Corporation at the upcoming membership meeting to elect the following individual to the Board of Directors for a three-year term ending in 2027. Grant Ring, three-year term. And secondly, that the Board member vacancy in 2024 not be filled. And just in support of that, some of us were fortunate enough to go out last week and have a tour of the water treatment plant, and we learned more about, not only the operation of it, but the fact that the competencies are important to the Board much more than the allocation of where you happen to live. So, and I think General Manager Ryan Johnson will be here within a few weeks to give council a roundup, a report of what's happening with the renovations out there. But I'm comfortable with the explanations we received and the conduct of the Board, so I would urge just to support this recommendation.
Thank you, your worship. Counsel Froze?
Thank you, Chair. As the mayor said, we had the great opportunity on Friday to tour the Buffalo Pound Water Treatment renovation/brand-new facility, and, yeah, it's $325 million, and, yeah, it's a pretty incredible project going on, and Mr. Johnson gave us a great tour out there. And, yeah, the Board isn't a regional-based Board, so it's not like a representation between Moosejaw and Regina. It's basically competency, as the mayor said. So I think that's important to note. It is a different level of expertise you need to sit on the Board, and after touring the water treatment plant, you completely understand why. Yeah, it's a great initiative, and they're doing really good work out there and that, so I'll definitely support this motion. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. No further speakers? Counsel Logan?
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment through you, just to note that Mr. Richards wasn't nominated again simply because he's served nine consecutive years, and it wasn't any fault of his, just the bylaws state that he can't be nominated again for that chair, for that role, so just wanted to point that out to the public as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Logan. Seeing no further speakers, I will call a question. All those in favor? And that's carried. And finally, we have Communication 51 from the City Manager's Office, re-Moosejaw Warriors' Use Agreement. City Manager?
Thank you, Chair. Gives me great pleasure to bring this report to council tonight, following several months of negotiations. Administration is pleased to present the attached proposed facility use agreement that contains the agreement to terms and clauses by the Warriors' Organization and representative of the city administration. The term of the agreement is intended to be effective September 1st, 2023, with an end date of August 31st, 2028. At this time, both the Moosejaw Event Center and the Warriors' Organization have been operating under the new clauses. In this new restructured agreement, several items were negotiated and ultimately agreed upon. These includes annual license fee, sponsorship, advertising, naming rights, ticket sales, game and practice scheduling, complimentary tickets, et cetera. In addition, definitions were amplified, schedules were modified, and some general clauses were also reviewed for clarity. I would like to really thank the Warriors' Organization for the work and the negotiations that we've done. I'd like to thank council as well for, really, again, the cooperation of the last eight months. It was a file that I took on early after starting at the city that I thought was important to ensure. We have a full agreement signed by both parties, and really, truly, the cooperation and the negotiations went quite well with the Warriors' Organization. So really, the open dialogue and the mutual respect demonstrated during the negotiation process, I've undoubtedly laid a strong foundation between the two organizations, and I'm confident that with our aligned interests now, we will continue to have WHL hockey in Moosejaw for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Tolly?
Well, I'm prepared to move the recommendation and then to speak to it. I would move that the facility use agreement between the city of Moosejaw and Moosejaw Tier One Hockey, Inc., operated as the Moosejaw Warriors Hockey Club, as attached to Communication CC 2024-0051 be approved, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. And just to kind of reiterate what the city manager is saying, we've been without a contract for some time, and the relationship between the organizations has been contentious, and the city manager went to work on this, and with the Board President Bob Dugall and the Board, their support, we've got an agreement that works for both parties. It's a very exciting time in Moosejaw to be a Moosejaw Warrior supporter. It would be nice to see the building filled throughout the playoffs and bring in those necessary revenues that will help both the Warriors' Organization and our Moosejaw Event Center. So I'm very, very thankful, the city manager, for being able to do this. It looks good on both organizations, and thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, your worship. Counsel Froze?
Thank you, Chair. Well, it is great, as the city manager said, to finally be at this spot, and I like the words "aligned interests," because, you know, even though it might have been a bit of a bumpy ride to get to the final document, you know, I think it's, we can pretty confidently say that, you know, we've always been coming from a collaborative and partnership space. You know, we want the Warriors to be successful, and we know that comes from a good relationship with not only city of Moosejaw, but also the Moosejaw Event Center. So I think the Warriors are doing excellent right now. It's so wonderful, but, you know, it's always really important to continue to support the team, no matter what season they're having, and that, so, but I'm really happy to see this is before us and that we came to a final agreement, but we continue to always support the Warriors. They are a community-owned team and a really important part of our community. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anything further? Counsel Robinson?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a question for administration. Where do we stand with the agreement on the capital contribution? I know the Warriors at one time was in their agreement. Are they up to date with those contributions, or where are we at?
Thank you, Chair, for the question through you to Counsel Robinson. There is still a portion of the pledge, if that's what Counsel Robinson is referring to, the original pledge for the Moosejaw Event Center. There's still a portion remaining that the Warriors' Board has communicated to me during the negotiation, that they intend on repaying this pledge in the future.
Thank you. Can you tell me when the last time they made a payment towards that pledge?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Counsel Robinson, 2018.
I have no further speakers in the queue. I would just like to just pass the gavel, just quickly, only to really thank the city manager for taking the lead on this, and I know we threw you right into the middle of, you know, a huge contract negotiation as soon as you got here, and you just took that and did a really good job for us, and with the help of whoever else you have on administration. So, I mean, that was a really big thing in my book when you came, that I was hoping we could get to this point, so thank you so much for that, and for making it come to this point where we've mended some fences and built some bridges, and really appreciate that, so. And yes, to everyone else, there was 4,700-plus people in the stands on Saturday night, hoping to see there'll be at least that many or more in the next weeks to come, and we'll be cheering on our team. I will take the gavel back. We have a motion on the floor. I will call the question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Your committee of the whole begs to report as follows.
Thank you, Counsel Eby. Counsel Eby's moved that the report of the committee hold be taken as read, received, and adopted. Do I have a seconder? Counsel Blanc, all in favor? That is carried. Next, we have reports of standing committees of the city council. Need a motion that the report of the executive committee meeting dated March 11th, 2024 be taken as read. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counsel Logan, seconded by Counsel Froze, all in favor? That is carried. And we'll need a mover and a seconder, that the report of the personnel committee meeting dated March 11th, 2024 be taken as read. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Counsel Looney, Counsel Eby, all in favor? That is carried. And we'll need a motion, the report of the personnel committee meeting dated March 18th, 2024 be taken as read. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Counsel Looney, Counsel Blanc, all in favor? That is carried. Next, we have, moving into matters arising from reports of standing committees, do any counselors wish to bring forward an item from the executive committee meeting minutes of March 11th, 2024? I'm seeing none. Then we'll need a motion that the report of the executive committee meeting dated March 11th, 2024 be received and adopted. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counsel Logan, seconded by Counsel Eby, all in favor? That is carried. That is carried. Next, do any counselors wish to bring forward an item from the personnel committee meeting minutes of March 11th, 2024? I'm seeing none. Therefore, I'll need a motion that, uh, the report of the personnel committee meeting dated March 11th, 2024 be received and adopted. Do I have a mover and a second, or? Moved by Counselor Logan, seconded by Counselor Luning, all in favor? That is carried. Do any counselors wish to bring forward an item from the personnel committee meeting minutes of March 18th, 2024? I'm seeing none. Then I'll need a mover and a second, or that the report of the personnel committee meeting dated March 18th, 2024 be received and adopted. Do I have a mover and a second, or? Counselor Eby, seconded by Counselor Luning, all in favor? That is carried. Next, we have reports of advisory and other committees. We have a report of the Heritage Advisory Committee. Counselor Fros.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, there's no approval of council required, um, for these meeting minutes, but I just wanted to note, um, something for, um, the public's information regarding the Royal Canadian Air Force's 100th Year Anniversary. The Heritage Advisory Committee struck a subcommittee to bring about 20 or 25 different organizations from across the city together to work on, um, a community celebration, either including the theme of the RCF 100 into existing events and/or seeing if there's an appetite to do something, um, separate from that. Uh, so there, uh, although these, there was an additional meeting that happened after, uh, this heritage meeting, so there'll be, um, a, a more detailed, um, uh, review in the minutes upcoming next to the next council meeting. But I did want to note something that isn't in these minutes, but I think it's really important because of, it's time-sensitive. So April 1st is sort of, is the official RCF 100 across Canada. And we have the opportunity, um, here to light our clock tower blue in recognition of this really historic event. And we're participating with all of the other landmarks across Canada in doing the same. So places like the CN Tower, most likely, hopefully, the Niagara Falls. And the other part of this is that we are also participating in a Guinness Book of World Records. So the RCF 100 official crew out of Ottawa has invited us to participate in that. And in order to do that, we have to create a 10-minute time lapse of our clock turning from white into lighting the blue. So, um, we've worked with our Director of Parks and Recreation, um, and two individuals who, um, who actually restored the glass on the clock tower, um, and know that whole area up there really well. So they're going to be setting up a camera and doing a time-lapse video of, um, of our clock faces that's turning blue and then submitting that with all of the others across Canada to be included in the Guinness Book of World Records. So we're, Mushtja is also listed on the RCF 100's website, is participating in the illuminating across Canada, but also we hope to help them break the, the Guinness Book of World Records. So because it's time-sensitive in April 1st, also, um, anybody across the city is welcome to, um, you know, to light up their own front step with a blue light bulb or anybody in the downtown, across the city, and businesses who want to turn on their light blue on April 1st and that and just show their pride for the RCF 100. And of course, to all the people who are, continue to serve at 15 Wing. Yeah, so, um, with that, um, I would move that the minutes of the Heritage Advisory Committee meeting held February 21st, 2024 be received and adopted.
Thank you, Counselor Fros. Do we have a second, or? Seconded by Counselor Logan. All in favor? That is carried. Next, we have a report of the Public Art Committee Minutes. Counselor Eby.
Thank you, Worship. These are the minutes of a meeting that was held Tuesday, March 5th, here in council chambers. There are no items for approval. However, I do have a, a question, um, coming from the minutes, actually, for the Director of Parks and Rec, just regarding the Ukrainian sculpture. Um, it's, it references in here as the committee's waiting for an update from DMJA and I was at a meeting down there and they're waiting for an update from Public Art. So I'm just wondering, are we, are we missing a connecting point there?
Thank you for the question. I will need to circle back to see where that's at. I don't have an answer right now.
Thank you. With that, I will move that the minutes of the March, sorry, lost it here, the Tuesday, March 5th meeting of the Public Art Committee be received and adopted.
Thank you. That's seconded by Counselor Luning. All in favor? That is carried. Next, we have a report of the Youth Advisory Committee, the Minister from March 6th, 2024. Counselor Fros.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no approval of council required for these minutes, but I just wanted to take a moment and, and thank our, our city manager, Mys Carmichael, and Scott Oshmachenko from, uh, Recreation Services Manager and, uh, Kristi Johr, the manager of Transportation and Procurement, for, um, taking some time out of their day and spending it with our youth advisory committee. The youth advisory have narrowed their, they started with 10 priorities, they've narrowed them down to three projects. And, um, and as they're learning about how to bring things to council in advisory capacity, I thought it was pretty important for them to actually spend some time with our staff and bounce these ideas off with, um, with city staff to have a greater understanding of, um, if they would work or if they wouldn't work. So I just wanted to thank our staff for taking some time out of their day, uh, with the youth and, um, and exploring these ideas with them. I think it, it was a really worthwhile morning. Uh, so I would move that the minutes of the youth advisory committee meeting held March 6th, 2024 be received and adopted.
Thank you, Counselor Fros. A second by Counselor Eby, all in favor? That is carried. Does any, uh, member of council wish to rise, bring forward a notice of motion? Counselor Luning?
Thank you, Mayor Tolly. I do wish to bring notice of motion for this, uh, um, very important, uh, item for the city of Mushtja, and it is lengthy. I've given a copy to our city clerk, um, and it reads as follows. Whereas Canada is experiencing record population growth, having welcomed 1.25 million new Canadians last year alone. And whereas, according to the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, CMHC, we need to build at least 3.5 million additional homes by 2030. And municipalities need to build or expand the infrastructure to accommodate this growth. And whereas, FCM has estimated that the cost of the municipal infrastructure required support housing development is, on average, in the range of $107,000 per unit. And whereas, according to Statistics Canada, the cost of upgrade, um, existing municipal infrastructure, so that it is, it is in a state of good repair, is in the range of $170 billion. And whereas, non-residential construction price inflation has risen by 29% since the end of 2020, and miss, and municipalities are facing soaring costs for infrastructure projects without a corresponding growth in revenue. And whereas, unlike federal and provincial revenue, municipal tax revenue has not increased in recent years along with inflation, economic growth, or population growth. And whereas, municipalities are facing a gap in federal infrastructure funding as the 10-year Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program has come to an end, the Canada Building, Community Building Fund is being renegotiated and the Permanent Public Transit Fund is set to start in 2026. Whereas, the Canada Community Building Fund, the CCBF, which was formerly known as the Federal Gas Tax Fund, provides more than $2.4 billion in annual capital funding directly to municipalities through a predictable allocation mechanism. And municipalities of all sizes use the CCBF to deliver direct results for Canadians by building and renewing critical core public infrastructure, including water infrastructure, local roads, public transit, and community and cultural and recreational facilities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the federal government work with agreement signatories and municipalities to maintain the CCBF as a source of direct, predictable, long-term funding for local infrastructure priorities. And be it further resolved that the federal government commit in budget 2024 to the next generation of infrastructure programs, including a new program for water and wastewater infrastructure and an increase to the, to the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund. And be it further resolved that the federal government convene provinces, territories, and municipalities to negotiate a municipal growth framework to modernize the way that municipalities are funded in order to enable Canada's long-term growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Luning? Counselor Eby?
Thank you. Mine's not nearly as lengthy. Uh, the next meeting, regular meeting of council, I will introduce a motion that reads that administration be directed to prepare a full report on the concept and process of creating an official downtown business improvement district, otherwise known as BID, in Mushtja. The report to include all relative information, including options for potential funding source for a newly created BID.
Thank you, Counselor Eby. Are there any inquiries to be asked of city administration this evening? Counselor Luning?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Tolly. Um, I'll ask this one verbally, um, and I did put a note in our eScribe, um, so I am, absolutely okay with it being a written, um, inquiry, but my question is to, um, the city manager and Mr. Acker about how the provincial budget is going to affect the city of Mushtja, i.e. revenue sharing and any other items. So I don't know if there's a little synopsis that we have now or a written is fine too. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I do have a short sort of synopsis of, of what we're aware of at this point. There may be additional things come out, but, um, in terms of the provincial budget, the biggest news for the city of Mushtja was the increase in municipal revenue sharing. Uh, we had estimated that to be a 14.3% increase, which you'll recall we incorporated into our 2024 budget, uh, and indeed, that was the amount that came forward. So very positive for the city. That's a significant increase in funding and helps to support our operating budget. Most of the other programs within the, uh, that impact municipalities directly, like paratransit funding, social services subsidized, bus pass programs, those sorts of things, uh, did not see any increases in funding. So that may have a small negative impact overall in our program, but nothing, uh, too major. One exception to that that we did note, uh, in the provincial budget was the Urban Highway Connector Program, actually has an increase of about $2 million in funding. So there may be some potential there for them to move forward to some of the capital projects that they have, uh, in terms of that program. So that's a positive. In terms of policing, we noted there was only a small increase in the overall policing grant, about $329,000 on about a $22 million budget, so, uh, very little increase there. Uh, having said that, though, there was an increase overall in enhancing the policing and public safety budget of about $2.1 million. Um, whether that benefits our police service will remain to be seen. Uh, in terms of our provincial library system, uh, unfortunately, there was no change in the funding for that system. So again, that puts pressure on them with, uh, all of their increased costs. Uh, they will, they will have, uh, you know, some decisions to make in terms of how they manage their programs and services. Uh, same would be true for urban parks. So Wakamau Valley, there was no increase in the statutory amount being provided to them. Uh, in terms of education property taxes, uh, the provinces indicated that those will remain constant at the previous year's level, so there will be no increase in education tax funding, so that's a positive for the community. And the last one I would note is just in terms of funding for the new school, that's included in the budget as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acker. Counselor Eby?
Thank you. I also have a question for Director Acker. Uh, just if you could update us and really for the public, um, details on the prepayment discount program for property taxes, which I know the deadline's coming soon.
Thank you, Counselor Eby. You're correct. The deadline is March 31st at midnight. And what that program is, is it's a discount program. If you pay your municipal taxes, um, prior to March 31st, you get a 1% discount, uh, on your taxes or, or the portion that you do pay of those taxes. Um, that's a program that's been in place for many years at the city of Mushtja. Um, one change we did make this year, though, is we moved away from sending out a paper notice. Um, prior, prior to this year, there would have been a paper notice that went out to all of our taxpayers, um, and we eliminated that. A lot of the rationale for that simply was, is we looked at other cities, uh, we were actually the last city in Saskatchewan still sending out a paper notice. And by not doing that, it actually saved us about $12,000. Uh, in place of that, we took on a promotional campaign, uh, through our communications area. Uh, we had some paper advertising in the Mushtja Express. Uh, we obviously discussed it at council. Uh, coverage from our media outlets was very good. Uh, we had social media and as well on the city's website, the first thing you see when you go in is, is mention of the discount program. Um, as I mentioned, that's a 1% potential discount you can get by paying your taxes three months early. Um, so there is benefit certainly to our taxpayers who wish to do that. The means that you can do that by is, uh, in person. You can come into City Hall, um, March 29th by 4 o'clock and pay, and that will get you the discount. Um, you can also, uh, utilize your bank, either online or in person, as long as that's before March 31st at midnight. Again, you will get the discount. The city's Dropbox is available, so you can drop that, that in, uh, prior to midnight on March 31st and you'll receive the discount. And, uh, we can move forward that way. So, uh, lots of different ways to take advantage of the discount. We encourage people to do that. Uh, one of the things you do need to know, though, uh, obviously, is how much your taxes are estimated to be. Um, that is part of what they used to get when we did send out that paper notice. Uh, if you go to the city's website, there is a, a portal available where you can determine what that is, just simply by going into it. And for those who, who, uh, aren't able to use that, uh, type of media, they can certainly just call the city at 694-4410 and we'd be happy to, uh, give them that estimate so they can pay those taxes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acker. Counselor Blanc?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to administration, I got two, uh, two inquiries, uh, both concerning roads. Um, the first one is 13th Avenue. I know that, um, there was a, a plan at one time to pave it, but because of the number of water breaks on that, I think it was put off and hoping that people would get there for sewer and their water lines repaired. However, driving over it, it is full of holes and I, and I know there was a couple little spots that were filled, but I guess my first question is, is there going to be more, uh, patching done on that road so that it is, uh, uh, you know, you can drive over it?
Thank you, Chair. I can't comment on the, um, progress of our Roadways Crew's transitioning from addressing, uh, thaw cycles to moving into, um, road repair locations. However, um, they have activated with, uh, cold mix and, um, the availability for hot mix asphalt will be likely a month or so away. With respect to 13th Avenue, um, we do need to get those letters out to residents so that they have an understanding that future capital works will be coming and, and, and they would do well to address their services ahead of that. In terms of providing a timeline for when those pothole repair will, will come to that street, I, I can't provide that information at this time.
Thank you. Uh, my second question is the 4th Avenue Viaduct. If there's any update on the, the, you know, agreement or non-agreement with CP? And secondarily, if you've had the opportunity to travel over it, it's in the same condition as 13th Avenue where it needs extensive work right now. Thank you.
For, for, um, thanks for the additional question. For the, the, um, repairs on, um, on Thunderbird on 4th Avenue Viaduct, I'd actually like to provide back a written response, if that's acceptable? Not fully knowing, unders, not fully understanding the process, but I can see that the city clerk isn't glaring at me, so I think it's okay. And the reason being is we are trying to find options to come up there to get onto that bridge and remediate it. So I would like to provide a response on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fros?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Through you to administration, um, I'm just wondering, we have a few parking meters, uh, downtown that, um, are completely missing. Um, and I'm just wondering, like, what is the process for those to be repaired and how long does that take? It seems like we have more than what we're normally experienced in, in the past, so I'm just wondering when those might be repaired.
Best is to have them reported in the MyCivic app. That's the best way to, like, confirm a location and, and, and determine and confirm that Public Works is going to go out there and repair that, that parking meter. Behind that, I, I think, uh, I haven't heard of any reasons for delays or, or issues around that. I, I also haven't heard of a, um, a spike in that recently. However, it's, it's likely due, due to the, um, tailing off of winter and, and, and that being more active, it's possible. Um, the best thing for Public Works is to have those reported through MyCivic.
So obviously, if I'm parking downtown and there's no meter there, I'm not So obviously, if I'm parking downtown and there's no meter there, I'm not going to report that because then that that means I actually get to park for free. So I don't think we're going to expect the public to be reporting those too often. So I'm just wondering, like, for the person who actually comes and reads the parking meters, do they have the capacity to report when a meter is obviously not working or, I mean, absolutely completely missing? That might be a more efficient way.
Thank you for the feedback, and it's well taken. I hadn't considered the the ability of MyCivic to perform a service when people don't necessarily want that done. What I can do is is put a brief response back in writing because, as you said, our parking meters, people would be the best people to answer that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Fros. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Chair. Might you have one inquiry? And again, I'll be picking on the same director. About a roadway from Thatcher Drive, Statacona West, from Thatcher Drive heading west. We've had several complaints, and I'm sure you've seen them. That road or that stretch of, we'll call it road, is pretty much impossible. And I'm just wondering what the status might be for that road in the future. Certainly needs to be built up and perhaps a culvert put in. There's some work to be done there. I'm just wondering if you could provide us with an update of what might take place there, please?
1600 Stad West?
Thank you for the question. Statacona West, 1617800 block, as well as several locations throughout the city are gravel roads. So gravel road functions a certain way, as well as the drainage features around that that are within the city's right of way. The the mechanism to change that wouldn't be through capital investment. That's an LIP. Both the gravel roadway, turning that into a paved road, as well as the drainage. That doesn't exempt our operators from getting there and trying to improve that roadway as well having a look at that channel and trying to improve it. But that's not a location that that is at a level of service with a paved structure or defined drainage across the edge of that roadway through curbs, catch basins, and outlets. I can say that I know that offers a real challenge for those locations because when the road is wet, there's nothing a grader can do. And and also oftentimes, a grader can come in and do surface repairs, superficial repairs, and that road needs to be crowned better. So we can look at that. And I do have an outstanding request for Statacona. The long-term solution to that location is an LIP.
Okay, I get that. But I I honestly disagree with you. From the Humane Society heading west, you don't need a grader there. You need a boat. And it's there's no culvert. It's pooling water. They can't possibly grade that road. So I get an LIP should fix it in the wrong run, but we must have to provide some level of service. And I don't think we're doing it. We've we've dropped the ball on that section of road, and I really think we need to take a better look at that.
Thank you for the feedback. I can have a good look into that location.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Logan. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, worship. While keeping keeping consistent, I'll also ask this question of Director Halton. With the weather the way it is, when will we see street sweeping? And particularly with our main street? Thank you.
I'll have to check in with Roadways and provide a report back. I believe sweeping has occurred on on Main Street in the past weeks, but I'll have to confirm that.
Thank you, counsel, for your questions, administration for your responses. There are no written answers to inquiries this evening. The next meeting of city council scheduled for Monday, April 8, 2024. With that, we're adjourned.